Ross. Here. There you go. White. Here. Taylor.
Here.
Robinson. Here. Baxter. Baxter.
He looks frozen.
Councilmember Baxter. Harris.
Here.
Baxter. Gin.
Here.
And Height.
Private.
A quorum is present.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gin is going to lead us in prayer.
Lord, I love you and I thank you for this time together and I ask that you would bless and anoint this time, help us to know exactly what to say and how to vote and how not to vote. And I ask that you would put protection around all of our city employees, especially our police and fire department. And we thank you for this, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Communications, anybody want to pull any of the communication? Hearing none about a motion to accept 1 through 8?
Don't move.
Second.
A motion to second, 1 through 8, Ms. Whitney.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter. You just muted yourself, Baxter.
Yes.
Thank you. Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes, I have one comment, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
It's just about, it's a crazy world we're living in when Family Dollar stores are putting in a bar.
Well, I didn't hear you, Charlie.
Comment. I said it's a crazy world we're living in when Family Dollar stores are putting in a grocery store and selling beer and wine.
Yep, it's a crazy world, no doubt. No doubt. Okay, we got a special call, Ms. Whitney.
Can you do the approval of the minutes first?
Yeah, how about a motion on the minutes?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Got a motion on Ms. Gin, second about Ms. Ross. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Thank you, special call.
On the special call, let me find my letter, they put it on the back. This is email dated Friday, August 7th, sent to council members. Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:05 PM on Monday, August 10, 2020, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-20118 authorizing application by the North Little Rock Police Department for funds under the 2020 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant JAG program sponsored by Mayor Smith. This is pursuant to North Little Rock Ordinance Number 9079, was sent to all council members and they have responded, and it was submitted by City Attorney Amy Fekman-Fields.
Thank you very much. Can we read?
And I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is Chief Ross in there?
Yes. Tracy, come up to the mic.
Could he just kind of explain?
Can I go ahead and read the resolution?
Yeah. We'll read the resolution, then the chief will answer your question.
The resolution authorizing application by the North Little Rock Police Department for funds under the 2020 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant JAG program.
Give me a motion in a second, bring it on the table.
So move.
So move.
All right, we got a motion in a second. All right, Tracy, what was your question, Debbie, you want to know what it is?
Well, no, I thought that he could just kind of explain to what a non-lethal weapon is and why they're doing this and the need for it.
Did you hear that?
I believe I did. First of all, it was kind of the definition of a less lethal, and that is a weapon that's likely used not to cause serious injury or death. It gives us an alternative to using deadly force in a lot of situations that we have, and we want to try to get more of those in the department that we have available to officers in the field that can be utilized in a lot of different situations. So that's kind of the definition of that. This particular weapon that we've asked for in the grant is something newer that's been shown to be very effective, and we feel like it would be a great addition to the department, especially in the current climate and times that we're going through. The second part of that grant is a first responder, first aid kit that they now make. It's very compact, we're going to issue one to every officer who has one on their person, and then that way, anybody that's responding, if that officer's injured, that officer will have a first aid kit that the person can utilize, or if we're in a situation where we have several citizens injured, every officer will have a kit that we can utilize for our citizens.
We are trying to build our inventory of non-lethal weapons. We've got 184 officers and we only have about 60, 50 or 60 non-lethal weapons right now, and so we're trying to add to our inventory so we can eventually get to where every officer has that opportunity to take somebody down that won't listen, or wants to draw on you or whatever else that it won't kill him, it'll make him wish you instead, but it won't kill him. So that's what's going on here. Any other questions, Ms. Ross?
Well, I guess that if he could explain the cost, because I was totally blown away by the cost of ammunition, I think you'd say ammunition or whatever, I was kind of really surprised on the cost, I think these are two operate, so.
I didn't.
Debbie, you got to get closer to your mic, we can't hear you very well.
Okay, what I, talking to Chief Ross, and I was just really surprised at the cost of ammunition or ammunition.
Can you slow down, slow down speaking, the audio is really bad tonight.
You know I can't slow down, no, I'll try. If Ross, he can explain the cost of the ammunition, it's basically one bullet, it's a sponge bullet, if he can kind of explain the cost, because I was really surprised on the cost of one, just one, in visual ammunition or whatever it is.
She said something about the cost.
Did you say that you were surprised at how much one shotgun, if you will, cost?
I think she's talking about the ammunition, so it's a 40-millimeter launcher, shoots a 40-millimeter sponge is basically what that is. It's a compact sponge inside of a shell casing, and it shoots that sponge at a high speed, which basically will temporarily incapacitate you for a short period of time. I think what she's referring to is the cost of those are about $24 per round, so it's not something you go out and spend a lot of time just recreational shooting. It has a purpose, we'll get enough ammo that we can train on it, qualify on it, and then each officer will have three additional rounds in addition to the one that's in the weapon.
Mr. Height.
Tracy, is this similar to the rubber bullets that we heard about on TV in the recent peaceful protests out West, utilizing that?
Not the same thing as a rubber bullet. We currently have shotguns that shoot rubber bullets, and then they also shoot beanbags. But this weapon is something that has been used lately in some of the protests, that shoots this larger 40-millimeter sponge at a high rate of speed, and it's been much more effective, you can use it all the way down to five feet from the subject, all the way out to over 100 feet, so it gives us a lot more range, and it's a lot more accurate than the rubber bullets.
So, although they're not lethal, they can inflict severe harm on suspects, is that correct?
Well, I mean, if it was misused like any other weapon, five feet, if you shoot somebody in the head, then it could cause serious physical injury, there's no doubt. That's why you're trained not to do that, and there's certain qualifications that you have to follow and certain specific guidelines that you have to use.
Okay, Ms. Ross.
One other question, Mayor.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Height.
Mayor, so Mayor, you said we have 184 officers, each officer is going to have one of these sponge weapons, even though they're not going to be to take it home with them, correct?
Well, we're working towards that, we're not going to get there anytime this year. We're working so that we'll, some non-lethal weapons of some sort in every police car, that's my goal, but it'll probably be, I bet, a year or maybe two years from now before we can afford to get everybody one. Ms. White, did you have a question? No? Okay. Ms. Ross.
I just want to thank you that I, you know, when I was taking into this too, not just for protests or anything, because there was a lot of cases that were cited, that, you know, they were individual, where they were suicidal, you know, that people were suicidal, and that they had used these, and incapacitated, they'd end up taking life with these, and so I was really impressed with the reports that I read on it.
Thank you. All right, we got a motion.
On the motion, Ross. White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson. Robinson. Push your little thing so your microphone doesn't have a red line in it. You guys. Can you unmute? Councilmember Robinson. Okay, now.
Yes.
Thank you. Baxter.
Yes.
Harris. Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to consent agenda. I have four, anybody want to pull anything out of that? Seeing none, how about a motion for 09, 10, 11, and 12?
Don't move.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries, thank you very much. I want to thank Melanie Hager and Dorothy Roams for their past service and their future service, and this deal on Riverfront Drive cuts in the median for that big apartment complex down there, so thank you all very much, let's go to new business.
I'm R-2113, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving salary increases to all full-time employees excluding elected officials and uniformed employees covered under agreements between the City of North Little Rock and the FOP, IAAF, and the NLRPD Supervisors Association of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, effective August 8, 2020.
Ms. Robinson. Drag it.
I have an amendment.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, did you get it?
I did not get the motion in the second. Who was it?
Who gave us a motion up?
They're not.
Ms. Ross and Mr. Taylor.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Ms. Robinson has got a motion to amend.
You want me?
You want Amy to do that for you?
Yes.
Okay, and I emailed all of this to you all on 2113. Councilmember Robinson wants to add to the title after Supervisors Association and a 25 cent per hour increase for all part-time employees, add a second whereas clause that says whereas the city council wishes to provide a 25 cent per hour increase for all part-time employees of the city effective August 8, 2020, and add an additional section that says, add a new section too, that says that all part-time employees of the city are hereby granted an increase of 25 cents per hour to their hourly rate of pay, and it adds to the others who are still proposed for a raise, but adds the part-time people for an extra 25 cents an hour.
Okay, we got a second on that?
Second.
We got a second on the, on the motion to amend.
Councilmember Ross has a question.
Ms. Ross.
Did we have a total to amend the budget, I mean, is there one coming up, is there a total to amend when we come up on one for the budget?
Did she ask, did you ask how much it will cost? Okay, you got, when we get to 116, Ms. Robinson will have an amendment for that as well, it's an extra around $15,000 and change.
For the entire year. Okay, on the motion to amend.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes, move to adopt as amended.
Drag it.
A motion in a second, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris. Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R-20114, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving salary increases for elected officials and city council members of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, effective August 8, 2020.
Move for adoption. Drag it.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? On the motion.
The motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson. Baxter.
Yes.
Harris. Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R-20115, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution adopting revised pay schedules for grade step non-uniform employees and North Little Rock Electric Department employees in the City of North Little Rock to reflect pay increase.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion in a second, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor. Robinson. Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R-20116, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution amending Resolution Number 9782, 2020 budget to amend the year 20 budget for 2% pay increase to full-time employees excluding uniformed employees covered under agreements between the City of North Little Rock and the FOP, IAAF, and the NLRPD Supervisors Association, elected officials, and city council members of the City of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Drag it.
Got a motion in a second, and this is where we have another amendment.
Ms. Robinson, do you have a motion for an amendment on this one?
Yes, I have an amendment, I'm back, would you wait?
Okay, and Ms. Robinson and I spoke before, and the amendment would just be in the title after city council members add, and add a 25% hour increase for all part-time employees, same thing in the second whereas clause in section 1, and then there's a new exhibit A with the budget appropriation that accounts for the part-time employees and that amount of around an additional $15,000.
Okay.
Was there a second?
Did we get a second on Linda's motion to amend? Yeah, Ms. White seconded, thank you very much. On the motion to amend.
Ross. White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris. Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes, move to adopt as amended.
Drag it.
Got a motion in a second, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson. Baxter.
Yes.
Harris. Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R-20117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaskett County Tax Collector against certain rural properties in the City of North Little Rock as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Don't move.
Drag it.
Got a motion in a second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here or online that wants to comment on 20117? Seeing none, close to public hearing, on the motion.
Ross. Ross. I think you said yes. The end of that, okay. White. Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter. Baxter. Can you unmute Baxter? Baxter.
Yes.
Harris. Gin.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Ordinances, O-2068, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the 2020 quota ordinance, ordinance number 9197, for the North Little Rock Patrick Henry Hayes Senior Citizens Center Department, first reading.
Move to spend reading.
I got a motion in a second to spend all readings, on the motion.
Ross. Ross. Okay. White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson. Baxter, yes, Baxter. Baxter. You're unmuted if you'll try to say it. Okay, Harris. Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes. Got one more comment, and I've learned this from all the lun meetings, if everybody would mute their microphones and cut out some of that background, or if it was a person speaking, just a comment.
Thank you very much. Next.
We need a motion to adopt.
I thought we did.
That was just suspending the readings.
Geez.
Drag it.
Yeah, we have a motion to adopt, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross. On the emergency, Ross. White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Okay. O-2069, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
And Councilmembers Taylor and Harris. An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow an electric fence in an I-2 zone for property located at 8300 Industry Drive in the City of North Little Rock, granting a waiver of the electric fence requirements of Section 5.11.10.F of the zoning ordinance, first reading.
Move to suspend the reading.
I've got somebody down here that wanted to make a comment, was that the gentleman who was in here earlier? William Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, you want to make your comment?
He was the gentleman.
Okay, he got all his questions answered, so he was fine. So with that, we got a motion to suspend the readings.
I do have comments that Mr. Ard called in.
Okay, go ahead.
So Mr. Ard called and asked that the following be read regarding electric fences. More information is needed, what is the wattage, voltage, and type of equipment? Every time 110 volts is doubled, it cuts the amps in half. That was all he said.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baxter, do you have a question?
First came up, it refers to a particular document governing these types of systems. However, during my due diligence and researching the requirements, you couldn't find it on Google, so I had to reach out to Mr. Hargrave to provide me with the information, not only from the IEC, but also some information from the American Society for Testing and Measures. So in the future, when we have something kind of like this, if we could somehow get the governing, I don't know, governing document for that, so we can go ahead and look that over, it would be appreciative. I had the opportunity to... in the city, and so this must go back, I have no idea. One of the suggestions was maybe when we had cattle in the city, that we, you know, we decided that we didn't need electric fences in the city. So I don't know if anybody has any reason. I'm just always curious why we've never allowed it before? If anybody has any ideas?
Okay. All right. We got a motion to suspend the rules, suspend the readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Need a motion to adopt?
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-20117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaskett County Tax Collector against certain rural properties in the City of North Little Rock as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-20117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution granting a conditional use to allow an electric fence in an I-2 zone for property located at 1200 East Washington Avenue in the City of North Little Rock, granting waivers of the electric fence requirements of section 5.11.10.10D and sections 5.11.10.10J of the zoning ordinance, first reading.
Move to suspend reading.
I've got somebody down here that wanted to make a comment. Was that the gentleman who was in here earlier?
Um.
William Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, you want to make your comment?
He was the gentleman.
Okay, he got all his questions answered, so he was fine. So with that, we've got a motion to suspend the readings.
I do have comments that Mr. Ard called in.
Okay, go ahead.
So Mr. Ard called and asked that the following be read regarding electric fences. More information is needed. What is the wattage, voltage, and type of equipment? Every time 110 volts is doubled, it cuts the amps in half. That was all he said.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baxter, do you have a question?
First came up, it refers to a particular document governing these types of systems. However, during my due diligence in researching the requirements, you couldn't find it on Google. So I had to reach out to Mr. Hargrave to provide me with the information, not only from the IEC, but also some information from the American Society for Testing and Measures. So in the future, when we have something kind of like this, if we could somehow get the governing, I don't know, governing document for that, so we can go ahead and look that over, it would be appreciative. I had the opportunity to look at the voltage. I had to break out Ohm's Law again. I haven't done that since basic fundamentals in the Air Force some 40 years ago, but anyway. And it was interesting to learn that these systems also have a daily, monthly, and annual check that's required to be done. So anyway, just having that information, you know, sent out to us, it would be appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ross, Ms. White, I'm sorry. Ms. White?
Yes, I'm not sure what you mean with what you said. I'm getting a lot of questions, and I called and spoke with, he sent me quite a bit of material, but really quick, and explained what was going on. So I know there is information available.
Thank you. We'll make sure that happens next time. Sean just shook his head yes, so we're good to go there. On the motion, Ms. Ross. Ms. Ross?
So my mission was why, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? If not, why not? You can't hear me? I'm not muted.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay, so one of the things, and I'll talk slowly, one of the things that I wanted to know is why have we not allowed electric fences in the past? So I called Martin Gibson, I called Bernie Wood, or anyone with any historical knowledge in the city, and so this must go back, I have no idea. One of the suggestions was maybe when we had cattle in the city, that we, you know, we decided that we didn't need electric fences in the city. So I don't know if anybody has any reasoning. I'm just always curious why we've never allowed it before? If anybody has any ideas?
Okay. All right. We got a motion to suspend the rules, suspend the readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-20117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution granting a conditional use to allow an electric fence in an I-1 zone for property located at 1200 East Washington Avenue in the City of North Little Rock, granting waivers of the electric fence requirements of section 5.11.10.10D and sections 5.11.10.10J of the zoning ordinance, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Move to suspend reading.
Got a motion and a second. Spend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-20117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution granting a conditional use to allow an electric fence in an I-2 zone for property located at 117 South Summer Street in the City of North Little Rock, granting waivers of the electric fence requirement of sections 5.11.10.10D, 5.11.10.10F, and section 5.11.10.10J of the zoning ordinance, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Move to suspend reading.
Got a motion and a second. Spend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-20117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution granting a conditional use to allow an electric fence in an I-2 zone for property located at 117 South Summer Street in the City of North Little Rock, granting waivers of the electric fence requirement of sections 5.11.10.10D, 5.11.10.10F, and section 5.11.10.10J of the zoning ordinance, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Move to suspend reading.
Got a motion and a second. Spend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-20117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution granting a conditional use to allow an electric fence in an I-2 zone for property located at 117 South Summer Street in the City of North Little Rock, granting waivers of the electric fence requirement of sections 5.11.10.10D, 5.11.10.10F, and section 5.11.10.10J of the zoning ordinance, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Move to suspend reading.
Got a motion and a second. Spend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-20117, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution granting a conditional use to allow an electric fence in an I-2 zone for property located at 117 South Summer Street in the City of North Little Rock, granting waivers of the electric fence requirement of section 5.11.10.10D, 5.11.10.10F, and section 5.11.10.10J of the zoning ordinance, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Move to suspend reading.
Got a motion and a second. Spend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.[1373.12]